Thank you. Good morning. My name is George. I'm the B County Judge. The time is nine oh two. And I'm calling this B County Commissioners Court Special Call Meeting to Order. Today is Monday, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, nine oh two AM. We are physically located at B County Courthouse Commissioners Courtroom number one ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. That was the call to order. If everybody would please join me in rising. Mr. Willow, please lead us a prayer.
I surrender the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Please go before us today and every day this week. When we face challenges, help us remember all the things you've brought us through in the past. May I ask all these things of Christ?
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's uh, second pledge, honor today's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Yeah, no, it's, it was not you. It was my fault. You know when you have one of those moments where your mind is just turning back to something that just happened and derailing your thought process? That's happening to me right now. My sincere apologies. Agenda item number four, recognizing visitors. Do we have any visitors in the audience who would like to identify themselves? This isn't public comment. We'll save that for later. Well, if you're here and you're not a, 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 a employee, thank you for being here this morning. Tell your friends and keep coming back. Um, agenda item number five, Commissioners Court Opening Remarks. Commissioner Haggard, I believe you have the...
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, not much this month, uh, or this two weeks here. Um, have been on the phone with the wind farms uh, out of the south end uh, on six thirty one, uh, developing some more road conditions that need to be addressed and uh, they're fixing to start working on those again. Uh, also have a meeting today with uh, Mr. Willow and uh, it's a Zoom meeting with the Council of Governments out of Corpus Christi on some drainage issues there in the south end, uh, specifically uh, Silver Creek and uh, six twenty eight, uh, low water crossings. Also will be introducing a few more that I'm looking at. Uh, other than that, uh, everything has uh, been going really well. Um, still addressing a lot of issues. I have some people that have approached me uh, to think about uh, putting in a flyer somewhere and getting more asking for volunteers to clean up some county roads. We have a few county roads that have been kind of chatted with and so, uh, wanting to, uh, I guess you would say beat the mowers. Uh, once the mowers get there, it's kind of like when the state mows, turns one piece of trash into fifty pieces. So, uh, we're gonna see if we can't get ahead of that. So, we're working with them right now. Uh, other than that, it's just been business as usual. Commissioner? Thank you.
Uh, had a busy week last week. We've had a contractors meeting with the ambulance building. Uh, so JLS Square got here this morning and they, they're starting the demo on the ambulance building that used to be the evidence room for the sheriff's office. So, they began work there this morning. We also had another contractors meeting at the tax office for the water damage that was done over the last couple of rains. Uh, we haven't gotten any numbers on that, but they're, they're proceeding to work on that. So, the uh, elections building. The elections building takes ninety-eight percent of the job.
I'm trying, I'm trying to make sure I get them all right.
Uh, they got a little bit of painting to do, some touch-ups to do on some of the doors. And when they complete that, that building will be a hundred percent and turned over to the county. So, that one's about knocked out. Then we had a call two weeks ago with Mr. Jones on the water leak at the, at the sheriff's office and it was a, it was a boot that wasn't put on a vent above the SO. It was pouring rain into the sheriff's office. So, they got that corrected, turned the painting, Alex and uh, the other guy combined, I think they, they did correct that. So, they got that, um, what else? We had one person that was caught, arrested in jail on the throwing trash out there on uh, Dagmar. Uh, they were throwing debris and tires and TVs and they got photographed and the SO picked them up and they spent the night in jail, a couple nights, you know, everything. So, yeah, good job. I appreciate that, sir. Thanks, Jones. And I'll pass that to Mr. Dewitt.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, Texas Association of Counties had a regional workshop in Centus last week. It was excellent. Uh, there was Commissioners' uh, credit of six hours and uh, it was pretty well attended by quite a few counties. Uh, if you're going through mineral, you'll notice that there's been a lot of work done right at the corner. Uh, it's for those blades that are coming down for the wind towers. They'll be coming down Highway seventy-two, then coming down six seventy-three. They'll cut across Shorty, if you will, in mineral and go out across a field to get back on six twenty-three. It's kind of interesting. If you have time, go by and take a look at it. There are a lot of people that, what are y'all putting in a freeway and mineral or what? It's across town. That's what it is. Across town expressway. And then, uh, I will appreciate the Road and Bridge, the uh, Black Hall departments. They've been a little shorthanded with COVID. They're getting back in the routine. They're beginning to get some of the deliveries now. Their coal mix, they're, they're working on potholes. They're picking up uh, limbs and stuff in the subdivisions and uh, they're doing their mowing. So, thank you very much. I know it's been a, a chore to get back to some semblance of normal, but everybody appreciates what y'all are doing. With that, I will pass my kind of part to you, Ryan.
Had a few calls from a couple of different people on uh, one, another process of changing names of the road. I got with Mr. Haggard on that. He had a little expertise of that. He gave me the list of what to do and I passed it along to, to a couple of constituents. Uh, other than that, talked to Ray on some issues and uh, took care of some things for me. Thank you, Ray. Road and Bridge, uh, helped out some disabled elderly people this weekend, veterans on uh, on their yards and whatnot, needs to be done. Um, other than that, just same old, same old, same old. Nothing wrong with the cash and, you know, stuff like that. Thank you all, Commissioner. Thank you all, Commissioners, for those comments and for everything you do. Just a couple of things, um, almost internal, uh, more than anything else. Uh, if there's other, any other departments, uh, if you have an issue where you see a water leak or your wind, your window vibrates or, you know, air comes in, you know, you gotta let us know. Basically, if you have any issues, treat your office, please, uh, as your own, as you would your own home. I hope that's a fair statement. That if you see something broken in your home, you'll either fix it yourself or you'll call somebody, uh, to take care of it. One of the challenges that we face as county government, uh, or as any public government is when it comes to the maintenance and repair of, of our facilities, we're always short on cash, but uh, high on need. It's really important that we continue to know as early as possible if there are incidents where, uh, where there is damage to county assets. And that's gonna be by our employees who are sitting at their desk or hopping into their truck and, and uh, and so this is just, again, just to encourage you to let us know. There's a, a formal process. If you have something that needs to be repaired, you can uh, submit a work order report to Ministry of Securities Department, Maintenance Department. Um, you can also contact my office directly. We just want to know. We need to start getting it on the list and, you know, and thank, uh, all of us, thank Commissioner Buddy as for bird dogging uh, the various buildings that are in his district, um, any new buildings, uh, we've all committed to building in his district as well because he does such a good job. No, I like it.
He's done such a great job.
Yeah, just have them all.
It seems to flow with him here.
But, but it is true. Please, please let us know because we, we don't want you to have to deal with, uh, with issues that, that are fixable. And we want it's cheaper to fix them early if we can catch them. So, thank you all for that. Um, and then the only other thing I'd mention through the packet, um, and you look at the Road and Bridge report, I mean, it's, it's really great. I appreciate the effort that your office puts in to actually putting that report together. I know that all of our departments work tirelessly and would be, would have similar lists of things that they do during the month. But when you roll into the thought that a lot of this is heavy equipment, you know, and hard manual labor, it's really impressive to put it all into one report. And I think you probably see that, Mr. Dewitt, and I certainly do as well. So, uh, it's great. I love hearing, uh, of positive feedback that you get from the community. So, really appreciate that report and uh, always looking through it. So, and I'm, I'm sure that there's never any negative stuff, but if there were, I'd really include it there for us as well. So, thank you all very much. All right, let's move on. Public comment, agenda item number six. Is there anybody here that would like to address Commissioners Court? Moving on, agenda item number seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge. Does anything anyone would like to pull from? I've got a motion in a second. So, further discussion?
Um, I have financials and investment. Um, if you want to look at financials, it's September and it's, of course, still being closed. So, it's actively changing, but at least it gives you a snapshot of when the report was.
It looked like there was just a couple, uh, of those line items that were way over the, the current budgeted amount on your, on, on the rec, wherever the reconciliation is. That's the end of your report, but uh, some.
Oh, that, that's Road and Bridge.
No, no, I thought it was everybody. I thought you was, is uh...
Uh, the one that we, um, attached, the ledger, uh, the statement of expenses that we attached to the financials are Road and Bridge. And there is some overages, but like I said, they're actively being changed. And sometimes, um, overages and sections don't have to be, um, we, we just fix what we can. But, um, it is actively, we're, we're actively doing line item transfers and, and cleaning up those.
I was talking about page four of eight in your packet. It's the, uh, general fund expenditures by department for the twelve months ending September thirtieth.
So, we have tax office and Justice Center and, uh, which is utility. Uh, utility is over because of the freeze. And you haven't seen those line item transfers because we haven't finished receiving the utility bills for September. So, when those come in, that's when I'll do a big LIT for those utilities because they all went over because of those freeze, freeze extras.
They've done everything they can to mitigate that through our provider and we've gotten out the final numbers.
Um, public assistance is over because of, um, autopsy. Um, and that's the only one I see that's over. Appraisal District is because, uh, there was a JE that I did ask for. This was, uh, this was done, which was an extra quarter put into that line item. So, that, that is been over. Um, what's the other one? Yeah, the, the other ones are utility. Um, and then on page five of eight is our revenues, uh, which we are still receiving and we are already over on collections, which is a, which is a great thing.
On the investments, uh, yeah, was that the total of?
The ten cents?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That, that's real. That's a good one. Yeah, uh-huh. And it's probably less than that because of paper we use.
That ten cents, we didn't have before. That's the way I look at money.
Well, for the paper, the paper that was used, that might have absorbed that ten of them. Uh, but we record what we get. So...
So, everybody knows that, that's a nineteen thousand, four hundred dollar return on a six point six million dollar investment. So, it does, it does that up very slowly.
Tax full different, yes. Tax full a little different, but...
Yeah, that's right. We're constrained in how we have to be very conservative.
We have no interest rate. There's, I mean, it's a point like two zero two.
When you're dealing with public money, it's called, you have to invest in Willow's and Orphan's Fund. Seriously.
Something they won't ever take away.
Um, they're, they're very secured, uh, where we have them. So, uh, but they're, they're just not paying.
That's public money. We can't.
We can't be risky.
Is there anything else that you need to highlight for us so that we'd like to point out?
Um, no, sir. I mean, just, uh, the interest is, is low.
Make sure if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you. Moving on. Discuss and consider action on the following items. I'm going to rearrange, uh, getting into habit of this fun. I'm gonna move agenda item number ten, uh, up in front of agenda item number eight. Approve application to Middle Quarter Prosecution Unit HB nine, Operation Lone Star Grant number four three seven four two zero one, funding the employment of a new attorney for the district attorney's office. We have Mr. Jose Alisada here this morning, our district attorney. Mr. Alisada, I'll give you the floor to, uh, make your presentation. Thank you.
All right. Um, you may not know this, but the current border prosecution grant pays for one prosecutor, one investigator and a, uh, administrative staff for that quarter prosecutor. Uh, back in July, I heard that there might be some more monies available during the special session because the governor had a, a border initiative that he called Operation Lone Star. I handed out some, some information about that, but the governor's idea was that, uh, he would instruct DPS and other law enforcement agencies that he had an influence over to begin arresting these illegal aliens for criminal trespass. That's why you have a flyer on, on, uh, the penalties for criminal trespass and, uh, it apparently, y'all declared an, uh, an emergency or a declaration. I can't remember what, when you did that, but because you did that, it allowed certain crimes to be enhanced to a, a higher level. And one of those is criminal trespass, which would go from a class B to a class A misdemeanor. Would, I don't prosecute misdemeanors. The county attorney prosecutes misdemeanors. And they would come into our constitutional county court for, for, uh, you know, if, if a judge was needed in those kinds of cases. But the governor's idea was, okay, we're gonna provide some more money to the current border prosecution unit, which is a bunch of counties that are along the border and also touch counties that are along the border. And that's one of mine. My district is Bee, Live Oak and McMullen. McMullen happens to touch Webb County. So, that is why I'm able to get this additional funding. So, when, when this money became available, uh, I asked for some additional funding with the idea that, uh, if I was able to get a prosecutor and what we could do if we actually got a number of these misdemeanor cases was allow that prosecutor, felony prosecutor, be sworn in also as a assistant county attorney. And, uh, they could help the county attorney prosecute these cases if we had a vote load of them. Now, there's currently a vote load along the border for a lot of these counties. We don't have that problem. Just yesterday, I got a call from a trooper that they've arrested some people. So, I think that they're trying to follow Operation Lone Star, uh, which means we might get a, a big influx of these cases. The real problem for me is in Live Oak and McMullen County. Uh, so what I need from you is one permission to apply for this grant. If you look, there's a flyer saying I actually have to apply for this hundred fifty thousand dollars. And if, if I get it, uh, then I will hire a prosecutor. Now, I'm also going to be asking Live Oak and, and Live Oak County to approve this same grant because I may actually have them administer that hundred fifty thousand dollars so that I could put that prosecutor over there. But I'd like your permission to do it here in case that doesn't happen. Uh, so I'm asking for permission to apply for the grant for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. My idea would be to either promote one of my assistants from within and then hire some additional staff with the money that's left over or use the, the grant exclusively to hire someone new.
Move to approve the, uh, Commissioners Court, uh, the county, the district attorney's request to apply for a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I've got a motion in a, in a second. Um, any further discussion? Mr. Alisada, the, um, the, it's, it's a hundred fifty thousand, not, uh, there's the project cost that shows on the paperwork of three hundred thousand, but...
Well, that's because it's for a two-year.
Oh, okay.
So, two-years grant. And nobody's gonna take the job that they only know funding's gonna be there free here. So, so it's a two-year grant.
Well, I think this is great. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
If you would, let me, let me amend my motion. If this was, uh, see a hundred fifty thousand each year for two years.
That's right.
I'll amend my second. Got a motion in a second. Both amended it. Any, um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Alisada, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All in favor, please, uh, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Moving on. Agenda item number eight, approved project expenditure approval for Turner Construction Pay Application Number thirty-one dated August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one for the Sheriff's Office, New Jail. Uh, it would appear to me that this is the final pay application?
There's minimal left. There's a, there's a little bit left.
From what I saw, we're holding back ten dollars in case there's, uh, something coming on that way. It's not completely closed out. We're holding back or they're...
No, we are.
We're, we're holding back just to keep it, keep the book open, keep it alive if necessary.
In case there's any other scupper valve that, that don't have a cover on it, on the roof.
That's great. Uh, move to approve, as presented.
Second. I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I just asked the Sheriff's Office if they have any input on this as far as, I mean, we're really lurching towards the final end zone with respect to Turner and all construction issues, save and except the air conditioning.
It's coming together. We're still concerned though about, uh, humidity and, uh, dirt.
And probably kick, it probably, uh, the issue became less important over the course of the last couple of weeks, but...
Yes, yes.
Is, are, are the dehumidifiers, they've been gone since September? Is that right?
It's been a while now, yes.
Have they turned off that breaker to the intake on the sheriff's office side?
Yes.
So, there is no raw air coming into that side of the building?
No. Superstitious, you have high humidity.
Still.
I, the, the temperature picture for the sheriff's office side, I'm not sure if it's ever been done.
If, if you're not in place, the Aggreka?
Well, remember we added on, they were gonna add on, uh, a line to go just to the sheriff's office side to, to add cooler air, filtered air into that air. So, I, I'll follow up on that thing.
We were built for that.
We were built for it.
For the, for the connection? I believe so.
Yeah, we were built for it.
It, it had that, I, I believe it had extra on the installation portion, but we, we can check into that for sure.
Is that one of the builds that's going out or can you hold into a charity?
No, that, that was the initial setup.
The initial setup. We'll, we can address that.
Yes. Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, anything further, you know, that they're... I wish I could say this. It's one of those like really good, feel-good moments, but, um, I have a little bit of anxiety, apprehension and...
Kind of fuzzy.
Getting as close as we still have a lot of issues, but, um, but hopefully. And Turner signed off on this, I mean, not Turner, uh, ECM signed off on this. Uh, so they're, they're advising us that it's the best move for the county to make at this time. So, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Jim. Agenda item number nine, approved expo request for auditory and fee waiver from St. Phillips Official School for their annual auction on May seventh, twenty twenty-two. Do you have anybody here from St. Phillips that would like to address the court?
Oh, no. I'm Alan Lynn. I'm the head of school at St. Phillips. This is my third year. Uh, we have fantastic school and, uh, limited resources. Our tuition each year is two hundred four thousand dollars and annual costs for educating child about seven five hundred, which leaves a tremendous burden for us for our fundraising. So, we were hoping to be able to use the expo center this year for your charge, be able to take that money, put it more towards our budget for, uh, holding the auctions and hopefully maximize our revenue from that so that we can reduce that burden of fundraising.
We still require a security deposit. I don't know if y'all have one on file from previous years?
Yes.
There's an electrical maintenance fee, but, um, if you've seen the application, if you've spoken with Wally, I'm sure he's probably expressed this with you. An entertaining motion.
I will amend that motion.
Got a motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? As a, uh, as a product of, uh, St. Phillips, I'm glad you guys are still going strong. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. It's a little alma mater pride there. I do have my initials in the boys bathroom, which has, it's still the same looking, you know, the toilet's way too low. It's a trail now.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Mark on the world.
Agenda item number eleven, approved pay increase request for dispatcher to Rebecca Weaver. Um, I, I guess I can explain, uh, this or Sheriff, if you wanna...
More of an oversight than anything else. From the very beginning, we had, she's the secretary in charge of dispatch and we were gonna raise her a thousand dollars back when they were still making twenty-eight or something. Uh, thankfully, all the dispatchers now are at thirties, but we left, we didn't change her as far as the supervisor. So, they're all, we're all still making the same thing. So, we're wanting to raise that up. And it's, uh, today is Rebecca Weaver. Years from now, it's gonna be so much with this position.
It's a position, not the first.
Yes.
And it's more of a budget oversight, Judge. I will make a motion to approve this, um, and retroact it too, whenever the payroll started for that year.
Um, I, I don't believe that that's, um...
I have a motion. Hold on, I have a second.
I'll second with discussion.
I have a second. Okay.
Um, I don't know if you can retroact because that wasn't in my notes to put that in the budget. That's why it wasn't there. Um, so my, um, recommendation was for the sheriff's office to come and ask the court, uh, to add that, um, to add that extra, which comes out to one thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy cents.
I'll amend my motion to make it, uh, make it really not retroactive. That's about, about forty dollars paid or all it is?
Um, and, and now we need to figure out where it's coming from. I did ask Ronnie, uh, to see if it'd come out of his budget and if not, that he would have to request, um, the court to find it from other sources.
Find a budget amendment for it.
And, um, I, I, if, if, let me just get this on my head straight. Ms. Weaver has a superior. There's, there's dispatch officer, uh, in, above Ms. Weaver, right?
Dispatch officer, she's checking in, in charge.
And she, she earns more than...
Historically, she has earned, uh, five thousand dollars more than, as she does.
Not, not Ms. Weaver, no, her supervisor.
Oh, she, no, she makes, I don't know exactly what her salary is. She makes about three thousand, I think.
I remember discussing this and I, I can only presume based on what happened that it wasn't so much an oversight as a decision that we were gonna raise everybody up to the same amount to get to that thirty thousand position. You had to get up to that thirty thousand dollars.
I do agree with you.
Gradual. Uh, there's, y'all can't find a thousand dollars in your...
I think he said he has a budget.
No, it, it doesn't have to be a budget amendment. Then, oh, why not?
Just a time transfer. You've got a lot.
We pay more than a thousand just in jail salaries.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say. I was like, I, maybe I just didn't understand. They've, they've got the money for it. So, okay.
We can prepare an LIT for next time and, uh, we'll submit it.
Yep. So, we've got a motion in a second to approve this effective immediately, uh, and, uh, and the money will come from internal line item for...
That one.
From your, yeah.
Not necessarily from the salary. Um...
From an appropriate place.
From a, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the second has been amended to conform with that motion. Hope, I know you got that all written down very precisely. Thank you. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Jim. Agenda item number twelve, approved George T. Bain in credit application for Road and Bridge.
Move to approve, as presented.
Second. I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I think this is just for equipment, is it not? Getting parts?
Yes.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Jim. Agenda item number thirteen, American Rescue Plan Status and Projects. Commissioners Dewitt and Lynn, we'll give y'all the floor.
Judge, I think we have several items, but before we get into, uh, some housekeeping items, I think the auditor has, uh, something she wants to bring forward to court.
Yes, um, I want to, uh, since the other employees were paid last, uh, payroll without my staff included because of a, of lack of information on the local government code that I had presented, uh, the business day prior. Um, I do have that information. Um, it was on local government code one fifty-two point nine oh five was in question. I talked to Judge Watley. I also talked to Mr. Knight. I talked to Judge Blanigan. He was supposed to give me an opinion letter this morning and I do not have it in hand. He said he would have it for me today. But what the deal is, is that, that our, um, my office is presented in district court, our salaries. And so that was my concern is that was, would there be any, um, anything, ha- having anything to do with that hearing? But Judge Wally said no. If it was coming out of my budget, that would be the issue, which this money would not be coming out of my budget. So, therefore, I request for my, uh, seven employees in my office to be paid, uh, like the rest of the county was.
Judge, I'll make a motion and, and if the Commissioners Court meeting will approve county employees... Judge, I'll make a motion and, and if the commissioners for meeting approved county employees, that item was, uh, uh, set aside for more information. I feel we've received that information now. I'm making motion to approve those seven employees for those, I call them COVID funds. Because the way she's paid and the amount is outside the parameters and not eligible. But I would recommend that the court approve the seven employees.
And I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes enthusiastically without exception.
Then some more information on the ARP plan information, sir. During that same meeting, we asked for additional information from several places. Emergency management, one of them, we've asked them to meet with us after this meeting. They have some information for us on that eighty-seven thousand dollar vehicle. We have a couple of employees that may or may not be county employees that have come up to be reviewed. We will review that at our meeting. One thing that, that we're running into is how do we want to proceed? And I'm going to propose something to the court that there's a lot of stuff out there. We have a lot of ideas, a lot of projects. But I'm thinking that the way we need to proceed is for, for the committee to look at those projects like we did the first time, bring them to the court and the court say, yes, let's do the one, number one, six, eight, ten. The others we really don't want to do before we go to the trouble of going to the consultants. And that's a procedure I would like to, to implement and make sure we're doing that because we have projects now we want to look at nonprofits in Bee County. We want to look at all the fire departments in Bee County, see how we can help them. We want to look at the hospital. But I think what we need to do before we go too far is bring that information to the court on a number basis, one, two, three, four, five. So the court can say, yes, this looks good, let's go forward. No, this doesn't, let's, let's don't do that. And that's what I proposed to the court. And, and, and I don't know whether we need to vote or just get a consensus on, on. I feel that would be.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to, to vote the, the committee that's, you know, is doing a great job. And y'all are executing your duties when the committee was formed excellently. So yeah, keep doing that. And, and I think that's a, I think that's the proper way. Though the one thing we don't want to do is have y'all get resolved and, and go through all of the motions and bring it to court. And a majority of the court says, no, I don't think that's right, what we need to do. And that's just a waste of y'all's time and efforts and the employees. So yeah, let's, let's go ahead and keep doing that. And, and it could be as we go down the road when, some of these are easy, right? The, the, the first tranche of, of support was, was relatively easy. You know, priorities and you guys did a great job of, of organizing and getting them done. And I think down the road we may be dealing with struggling with more complex matters that it might, it might require, you know, multiple, you know, reports to the court just for additional guidance for y'all again, so that y'all don't get too far off in one direction. That's the whole core of support. Just to get, just so y'all.
Okay. Then, then one other thing, uh, part of my training way back when was called completed staff work. And what we need, whenever this is approved by the court and comes back to the auditor's office for them to finalize, completed staff work, it needs to be complete. Where all they have to do is say, yep, this is this, this and it's gone. We cannot put work on them. We can't expect them to go out and get this. We can't expect them to, to do the paperwork to requisition vehicles. That needs to be done and presented to them to just move forward.
By the department, we, we will need the department or the one that has brought the project to the committee to help this and help with the justification.
That's what I'm trying to say.
That's, that's who we need.
Because, because they don't have the staff to do this. Let's say there's eight projects. One project will tie them up and they can't get the record job done because it's putting a big burden on the auditor's office, especially on Mr. Gray. They're doing a great job. We don't want to overwhelm them, but if we systematically go one, two, three, four, five, and I have to appreciate what the, uh, the chief deputy has done. As his projects were approved, I think he's done the paperwork. I don't know what's been submitted to the auditor's office yet. Where all they have to do is go forward with it. So anything we do like that, everybody remember it's called completed staff work. In government, if you didn't complete your staff work, and I have a big bunch of papers that I presented to this gentleman to do, and all he has to do is just check off and sign it, it's going to go. But if he or she has to go through a bunch of process, it's going to be stuck there for a long time. I, I've learned that over the few years I've been in government that if everything's completed as far as you possibly can, where all it needs is your signature, sir, and it's approved, it's gone, it moves a lot faster. So if we can be sure that everybody that has projects does that, we appreciate it. And again, we need more projects. We need those. We're still working. We've got about a million six left out of this one. We're waiting on information on the water tank out of Skidmore. The, uh, service system at Chase Field, we need that information because I know it seems like we have a lot of time, but we don't. It goes very fast. So, yes, ma'am.
The justifications are not in. So it's not, you know, a lot of it is us to, to help push them. But if our third party is holding us up, that's where we're held. Because I, I feel a completed project is for us to have a justification attached to the purchase order. And then to me, that means it's ready good to go. And that's how we did the cares money when we, we got those justifications first before we went forward. And so to me, that's very important for our grant process to have that completed. And then we know, okay, we have this little seal of approval, we can, we can fish this picture.
You know, we have a little difference of opinion about who's supposed to write that justification. When I look at the two pages of numbers from the federal government, from the Treasury Department, it lists them and I think four point one was public employee salaries and all. We'll talk about it more in our committee meeting, but if we're going to start, I think that's all my selection.
Fair enough. Yeah. And, um, so it, uh, a, a department, uh, and actually an elected official came to my office last week and, and raised a, a desire for, and an idea for where our funds might be available. And I'm, I'm very, uh, very appreciative that, that the elected official did come forward and, and let me know. And hopefully we've already relayed that to the art committee. As I'm sitting here right now, I'm thinking probably I haven't. But I'll do so immediately. It is only Friday. But, um, but yeah, if you do have any other ideas, uh, any needs, um, don't hesitate to reach out. The committee members are Commissioner Dewitt, Commissioner Lenny, uh, just getting to Ms. Uturia, Mr. Castillo.
Our ex official member, our chief deputy.
Why don't we just make him a member? And our newest member of the committee, Chief Deputy Ronnie Johnson. Thank you, Sheriff, for volunteering and.
Always, always.
To participate in official capacity on that, on that board. You know me, I don't like secret partners. The story is told. But yeah, thank you guys for what you're doing and please come up with those worthwhile and valid ideas. And we'll move on. Is there any other discussion, guidance, questions? Anything that's on this agenda?
I appreciate it.
Okay. You don't have your hand raised, do you? It's a gonalon. I'm a great auctioneer. Okay. There's no action. Moving on, agenda item number thirteen. Update discussion and possible action regarding Bee County COVID-19 status, preparedness and contingency planning. Mr. Willow.
I guess I'll follow the code line and I'll actually stand up.
Thank you.
So far, Bee County, we have, we're down to twenty-nine active cases. However, our deaths are up to a hundred and twenty-seven, two more than last report. Watching the news, there's now COVID Delta plus variant coming up. They're still not sure what the impact of that's going to be on the community, on the county, on the United States as a whole. But that's new on the radar. They're also saying that the COVID-19 is going to be kind of like the flu, a seasonal, um, disease. The COVID takes off during cold weather. And so there's a good possibility we'll be scared, spared at a high rate as opposed to the northern states. But, um, we're still learning. The variants is mutating and doing everything it can to try to keep us on our toes. But we're doing everything we can to combat it. Testing is doing well. Uh, we're still testing Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Ten o'clock at the expo center from ten to three.
No appointment necessary.
No appointment necessary. Drive up, um, no out of pocket cost whatsoever. One thing I, outside of the COVID, I'm going to jump in on this. November second, TAC is going to be down in Bee County doing a safety, um, conference at the expo center. So Spark, you caused me to remember that when you said you were in jail. So they were here last week. They took a video of Mr. Garza who invited them. I'm, you know, going to be on the website, invite people to come to the conference. And I only took him one take, even though we tried to mess him up so bad.
I hope it's a good turnout.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Willow. Anything further, any other discussion, question, comment? All right. Keep doing good, everybody in the county. Uh, we have no executive session items, but maybe on agenda number fifteen, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.